I have an announcement. The Household Hazardous Waste Day is scheduled for May 10th. It's a Saturday, May 10th. It's not Monday, the 12th, which is the ad that ran in the News Guide. Unfortunately, there was a misprint. Not only that, latex paint and used oil, I mean, used oil paint will be both accepted this year. Latex is, this is new because we are going to be recycling latex paint. And there will be restrictions on how it is to be brought to the collection day. And we will be getting the word out about that. At minimum, I believe, it's in the original containers, clearly marked, so that we know whether it's oil-based or latex. Then we will be packing it and the state recycler will be hauling the latex away. And this is the first of a statewide initiative. This is the first time we're going to experiment at the household hazardous waste collection events this spring. And if we get overrun by cars, we may end up changing the model a little bit and decide to do collection days for paints opposite house or hazardous waste or whatever. It's all, this is all new.
Different hours.
Different hours, yeah. Or maybe it could become an ongoing aspect of collection at the transfer station. But at least we've got a recycling program in place now, which is very, very appreciated. So again, that's Saturday, May 10, nine to one.
That's basically one of the things that's going to come out is in the original container. You're going to need them?
Yes, we will publicize how to package your latex. And that was my announcement.
Margie, what about electronic equipment?
Electronics all go to Bennington Transfer Station. We are not a certified location for that recycling program because we don't have the space. However, you can bring certain electronics to the transfer station. Tam will pay to take a TV or, but you can get rid of it, certain items for free through the statewide program.
Okay. Houghton Lane, right?
Yes, right at Houghton Lane.
So in the advertisement for the hazardous waste day, you're going to list the things that they can take, bring?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
There's a limit on the number of electronic things you can drop off at Houghton Lane at any one time.
Is there?
Yes.
What is it like?
It's either seven or 10. I can't remember.
Yeah, and there's a very helpful state website that you can get to and, yeah.
Anything else, Margie? Any public comments?
I have one.
Yes.
Could we have people that are on the Board of Civil Authority, can we have them take some classes or whatever?
I believe there's a, I think there is a civil Board of Civil Authority class in the institute.
Do you remember back on the 21st of August when we had the Board of Civil Authority meeting?
In your house, up on the mountain?
Yeah.
Karen and, yes.
Up on the mountain?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Me, Karen, and Joyce.
Right, but Joyce couldn't walk up.
Okay.
Right, remember that?
Yeah, she stopped.
She stayed with the vehicle.
Yep.
According to the Vermont statute, a minimum of three members of the Board of Civil Authority goes up and sees the parcel that's being grieved.
Do you know what?
It wasn't three people, it was just you and Karen and myself.
Yeah.
But I don't count.
So do you know what statute that is by any chance?
Hold on. It is Title 32, Chapter 131, Subchapter 001, Paragraph 4404. Drop down to Part C, second sentence. Each property appraised which is being appealed shall be inspected by a committee of not less than three members of the board who shall report to the board within 30 days of the hearing on the appeal and before the final decision pertaining to the property is given.
And, yes, but we did approve the appeal, though.
Yeah.
So, well, definitely we'll bring that up and make sure that doesn't happen again if it's, I'm the liaison to the Board of Civil Authority, so I'll definitely make that point. We did have three with us, but that last quarter mile or so, Joyce just wasn't, wasn't going to make it up there. And it was a little steep.
Was it Joyce?
Joyce, it was Karen, Joyce, and myself, yes. Joyce.
Well, because on the decision of the board, it says it was Karen, yourself, and Anne Meeley, M-E-L-E.
No, it wasn't Anne. I'm pretty sure it was Joyce. She rode, they rode with us up the mountain there, yes.
Okay, because on the final decision that was sent to me by certified mail, it was Anne.
No, I'm sure it was Joyce. We followed you up in my truck.
Yeah. I'm not too upped on their faces to know who they are. Now, I sent a, I called Brian Levine, Deputy Secretary of State, and told him that. The rebuttal I made to Larry Johnson's remarks was never put in the minutes of the meeting and neither was listed down in the decision of the meeting. When Larry Johnson said, "My building permit of 1985," and I corrected it, it was '86, Larry Johnson said as of 19 August, the zoning administrator had said it was expired, but it hadn't because he hadn't made his decision. He did make a decision and I went and sent him an email back stating to him, "You show me in the zoning bylaws that covers that building permit, yours has an expiration date." There's nothing on the application, there's nothing on the part that the zoning administrator fills out, there's nothing on the building permit that has an expiration date.
Well, the new ones, they, there is.
Right, that one did.
Yes, that was back then, before they was instituted. And I believe it is stated in our bylaws now that a building permit is valid for one year.
Right, it is now. Because when I was talking at a meeting planning commission, Jake Jabonski came up and showed me that, hey, here it is in writing. And I looked at the front of the zoning bylaws and they were 2008, I believe it was.
Yeah, probably.
And I just tossed it on the table. I said, "It doesn't apply because my permit says in accordance with pursuit of the zoning bylaws on March 2nd, 1971."
Yeah.
But we've got that issue taken care of because the new zoning administrator.
Mm-hmm.
I sent a certified letter to Tyler, as I spoke to him on the last day that he was working for Shastler, he said he hadn't made a decision yet, but I didn't get it in writing. So I sent him a certified letter asking him to send me a letter stating that as of the last day he was here, he had my final decision. Before that, today, the new zoning administrator, he did some checking and found out, there's no expiration date, there's no start date, there's no nothing.
I'm.
The permit is still good until I build or sell a property.
Mm-hmm.
Now, looking up in the, I talked to Kate Curly, she's the lady in charge for the current use program.
Curly.
I told her how Larry Johnson testified that the only thing I had to do was give up my building permit and roll the two acres into the program. You can't roll it in. I asked Kate Curly to send a letter to Joyce Scarry, because she's the chairwoman, of the procedures, and she wouldn't do that. She wanted me to tell Larry Johnson, for Larry Johnson to call.
So.
And I know Larry Johnson would not, wouldn't call and say, "Well, Bob never told me." Because of lies he's told in the past to me. So the letter I sent to Joyce Scarry, I asked her, you know, to reopen it up because this is what Brian Levine said, the Deputy Secretary of State, they should reopen the Board of Civil Authority meeting. They don't necessarily have to change the decision, just open it back up and take care of these issues so there's no problems hanging later on. Well, Joyce didn't want to do that. She sent me a letter and her letter, she has down there that the oath read agreed by all parties as follows. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will well and truly hear and determine all matters at issue between taxpayers, enlisters submitted for my decisions, so help me God or under the pains and penalties of perjury. Joyce goes on to say, "Each board member was given this oath at the beginning of the proceedings by the chair," which, under the statutes, the board's supposed to take. It's Title 32, Chapter 131, Subchapter 001, Paragraph 4405, the oath. Joyce goes on to say, "The listers were given this oath." You know, what are the listers doing taking that oath? They're not. She goes on to say, "You as the appellant were given this oath." Well, wait a minute, we've got a problem here because according to the minutes of the meeting, the listers were given an oath. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you shall be given relating to the cause now under consideration shall be the full truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?" So she's saying two different things. Minutes saying you take one oath, she's saying you take another oath. I don't know how that can be, but apparently to her, it can be. She goes on to say, "You had an opportunity during this time to dispute any of lister's testimony you felt may not be accurate and did not." That's a lie I did.
Do you?
I said that the building permit was 1986.
Mm-hmm.
Larry said it was '85.
Is that corrected in the minutes? Was that in the minutes?
No, it wasn't corrected in the minutes.
I haven't seen those minutes, I'll tell you the truth, so.
Okay, because the minutes, I tell you what, they're on four pages, they're scattered through the book.
Mm-hmm.
It surprised me because it starts off where you guys have your checklist for the voters.
For the, for the number of properties or number of listings?
Well, the board had a work session to continue the review of the voter checklist as mandated by the state every odd year. Did that first, then, that started at 5:30, then at 6 o'clock, you started taking the appeals. And the first guy was Mr. Jim Gilling. He wasn't present. He had sent a letter which I believe Judy Stratton read to the board. Then you skip a page because it starts on page 184, 185, doesn't have anything about it. It's like they had to stick it someplace, so I stuck it in there. Page 186, it continues on and it has mine after it has gems on 186. It goes into mine and that goes on into 187.
And at that meeting, I think that's when we decided to meet you up at your property.
My.
Okay.
So Joyce goes on to say, "We take each person under oath at their, their testimony is accurate and given to the best of their knowledge." Well, the best of my knowledge, this fellow right here is a pedophile, is he? And it's not the truth? The best of your knowledge?
Well, an oath is a little, I mean, I don't know, I guess, I guess, is there a point that you're trying to make that you wanted to try to?
Yeah, I'd like to have a board, like a Board of Civil Authority, which is supposed to be a legal board, say like a court, have it on the up and up.
I don't think anyone was purposely trying to mislead you or anything else.
That's why I was asking, do they have a class on it because the screw-ups that was done?
That was the first time I'd attended one, and I don't think anyone intentionally tried to mislead anybody or make anyone feel.
Karen's been to them for quite a while.
Mm-hmm.
Because I've had other Board of Civil Authorities I went through, Karen sat on.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, Karen's been up there before.
Mm-hmm.
The only thing I know, if I can interject just for a minute, is that I think that the role of the Boards of Civil Authorities, how they function and what they do is probably up for discussion. I don't know, I gleaned this from something our appraiser has said. I think that as an institution, they may or may not be falling short of the intent due to the complexity of today's valuations or whatnot. But I'm not sure, Bob, that any remedy that you're seeking can be granted by the Select Board. I think that at the moment, you're left with.
Well, people are pit from the Select Board.
Not people?
No.
All the Select Boards are on the Board, all the selectmen or select people are on the Board of Civil Authority when they.
Right, you're on there. And then there's.
It's defined by statute who gets to serve.
Right, and according to the.
Aren't they elected? Don't we?
You have elected officials. You have listers, you have Select Board members, you have your justices of the peace.
Justices of the peace and.
And I can't remember who else is there.
Because I was wondering how Larry Johnson can come out and say, "My building permit of 1985, when it was '86." How can he go and say that as of 19 August, the zoning administrator has said it's expired?
As of this year, so he's.
No, this is back in 2013.
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's August night, okay. Especially when there was no report, I'm not sure.
Okay, plus when Larry Johnson said to roll it over, you can't roll it over. What you have to do is you've got to go and initiate a whole new application.
Whole new plan.
The property that's in the program and what you're adding, you have to have a force management plan and all the nine yards. You just don't roll it over. And when I talked to Kate Curly, she was very upset and she wanted to talk to Larry Johnson about it because she told me that that information is the basic information all listers are supposed to know.
Okay.
And he didn't know that.
So basically, you're saying you cannot incorporate a two-acre building parcel into your land use of the 115 acres or whatever it is. We're, I think that, I do remember the conversation, we get rid of the building permit and include that in your land use.
If I could roll it, I'd have to start with a whole new application. And after paying close to $900 for the first one, I wasn't going to dip in my pocket.
Did you ask Kate if there's any way to amend the plan?
You can't amend it. I asked her. In 2010, excuse me, 2011, the deal was with Ed Koffel.
Claude Kelter.
Yeah. Said that the two acres, he was, Kate Russell talked to him. I've got a letter which I have for the hearing we had here. That the individual, and he couldn't remember who it was, it was somebody tied with the state, said that the two acres was going to be valued the same as the rest of the property in the program. Because if there wasn't, we'd put the two acres in and then when I ever decided to go and build, okay, now I'll pay the penalty and bill. We decide instead of going through all that rigmarole, we'll just take the two acres out to start. It's going to be valued the same. And then in 2011, I found out, no, it wasn't. Because the day before taxes were due, I get a notice, a revised tax bill, where I need to pay more in taxes. And I put it in and showed.
The two-acre building lot, you have a builder's permit for it, it should be valued differently than what the land you have in land use. I mean.
Right.
I mean, that's.
Well, we were told it was going to be valued the same. In fact, in 2010, when I went and agreed the assessment, because it went from $31,200 to $63,600, that nice piece of land you saw up there.
Mm-hmm.
Karen Mallinger was the chairwoman of the Board of Civil Authority then, and the board decided that the property was valued at $848 an acre, which means the building lot chunk was $848 an acre.
That's the land use value per acre.
No, I didn't have it in land use yet.
So you're saying the 117, you were 117.
No, I had 75 acres at the time.
Okay.
Out of the 75 acres, I took two acres out. I did that after we had the meeting with the Board of Civil Authority, that's when I put it in, or 2011.
So I guess the point you're trying to make, the action you're trying to make is why get the BCA better educated on the procedures?
Better educated and get the listers to know what they're going on.
And the listers shouldn't be speaking if they don't know what they're speaking of, it's fact.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
Now, there was a problem the other, I'll say it the other day, a week or so ago because somebody went ballistic. Well, it's things like this that help make people go ballistic is when you have a statute that says this is what we're doing, this is how it's going to be done, and then people just on fly decide, no, we're going to do this, we're going to do that.
Well, I think we had three going up there for the reason to look at that property. The bottom line is Joyce is old and that last little area up to your property is a little bit steep for, I don't think she realized how steep it was when she.
Well, I told the board how nasty it was up there and Karen been up there two or three times, so.
Well, I've been up there now, too.
So what should have done is, when she said she couldn't walk up there, we all come back, get somebody else to go up.
Well, yes, in hindsight, I believe that's correct.
Because the state statute says you will have three people, and we didn't.
Had three people all but the last 200 yards.
Three people have to go and see the property that's being disputed.
Okay.
And it wasn't, it was just, there were three people, but I didn't count.
Yep.
And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Bob. Have a nice evening.
You, too.
Okay, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything on the agenda for tonight?
Nope.
Nope. Do you want to approve the minutes of April 7? Take a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Does anyone, any discussion? I didn't see anything here that jumped out at me when I went through it.
On item number eight.
Road Summer Hours?
Yeah. I didn't understand that it was official that they were going to go on 10 hours a day because I don't think they ought to.
Well, the reason they were saying they would do 10 hours a day because when they get on these projects that are out way away, you get out there, get set up, takes an hour or two, and then you get, you know, you work, you take your lunch, and by the time you get after lunch, you got to break down and bring everything back. And it's, and it's, they've been doing this for the last three years.
Way more than that.
For four, five years.
It's been forever. It's been a long time.
And it's more efficient for them to put in a solid eight hours minus an hour on each end setting up and taking down. And they have been doing this for a lot of.
Oh, I know they've been doing it. My problem is that if you get these storms like Irene and like that, you're a lot more likely to be paying overtime. Where if you're working eight-hour days, I mean, Saturday and Sunday, okay, that's going to be overtime anyway, I understand that. But in the summertime, I know it's nice to everybody have a 10-hour, three-day weekend.
Yep.
But I think in the long run, it's going to wind up costing the town money.
Did you want, I, I remember we said this and he started it, in the minutes, I mean, do you want to make, bring it up again on the next agenda, next week, next meeting?
Yeah, I think I'd like to discuss it because I think, I think in the long run, it'd just be better.
Okay.
I understand. I mean, I got a business, I know how it is to go out and set up.
Yeah, I mean, everyone knows, you've got heavy equipment, you're moving.
Yeah.
A bunch of.
But I mean, it doesn't, it's not going to take, I don't believe, anywhere in town an hour to drive a truck to get set up. And the graders and stuff like that, you can leave, most of the places, you can leave anywhere in town you want to.
Yeah.
And.
I guess, I mean, this is what they've been doing for the last six years.
No, I understand that.
But there was not always, to be fair, there were not always consensus, you know, across the board that that was the practice to have.
I don't think we made a motion, I just think that it was.
Just an agreement.
It was an agreement that they would start on the fifth, so.
They mentioned it, I didn't realize that it was set in stone.
So it wasn't, it wasn't a, so put it on the, put it on the agenda for the next time if you'd like it.
Yeah, I'd like to. I think I'd like to have the whole board discuss it.
No motion was made, okay.
Okay, but they, obviously, the reason was for efficiency sake, you get a couple more hours during the week.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but also I think there's a chance for getting some overtime that might not be necessary.
In the summertime, we don't really have to worry too much unless you say like Irene or something like that, and everyone's working overtime.
I know.
So, it's not like, I mean, they get their 40 hours in, they get a three-day weekend, which is okay, as long as they get the time in and so forth, but we'll talk about that next time.
Okay.
Okay, does anyone have anything else on this agenda that needs to be updated?
I found one typo on page two. The minutes that had been approved before were actually March 17 and not March 13. I changed that, or I'm going to. And on one of these sets, Tim already sent in comments.
Yeah.
Which must be in Dropbox. I will go find those, which changes noted.
Actually, I think I saw it from my email. I don't think I saw it in Dropbox.
I was hoping it would be email.
Yeah, I think I got it here.
All right. I think I prefer to advocate that we use email as the approved method of correspondence. We'll lose track.
Okay, where is the question regarding me? Here you go, 47, just a couple of edits for 47 and none for 410. 47, oh, sorry. Abigail Beck, not Becker.
Okay.
The first one, discussion of town plan proposal. We have stated a goal of the town instead of the single on the very same discussion.
A goal?
A goal, yeah, a goal of the town plan. And number four, minutes, changes to be made are noted as filed, correct spelling to Carson in attendee, page 5, regarding Article 3 and Article 6. Oh, there we go, yeah. Motion carried 40. Yeah, Tony did not abstain. It was 40013, solid waste amendment.
Okay.
It's not 401, it's 400. He didn't abstain, he, I think he, he left the meeting at that point. He had a call or something, I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, Tony, out of, out of.
400.
Out of room.
He was of, he was.
Not voting.
Yep, and he stated that he was informed of the vote and agreed with it. That was this, Tony rejoined the meeting and was informed of the vote and agreed with it. And then if you want to take a look at this.
Oh, no, that's fine. I'll pick it up.
Okay, and then number 14, memorandum of understanding. Tim Skoggins, second paragraph, Tim Skoggins proposed a new paragraph six in the memorandum of understanding specifying that the BRCRC will pay to the town those HAW grant funds received on behalf of Shastler. received on behalf of Shasberry in exchange for holding two HHW collection days. And motion by Mitrae to approve the modified MOU on the third. Where's that one? That's all Tim had.
Okay.
So, any other discussion? Approve the minutes as amended?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three. Three oh oh.
Okay. Ken, absent.
Yes.
Okay.
The minutes of April tenth.
Okay, the minutes of April tenth. Do we have any updates for that? I thought it was... Did I motion to adjourn?
I didn't have anybody, so just, who should we fill in the blanks? Sure, put in Mitrae. And who wanted a second to adjourn?
Tony.
Sure.
Tony! Okay.
All of them, motion to approve the April tenth meeting minutes?
Ken?
Ken, second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh. Now we got the approval of warrants.
Okay. You have your retirement, Beamer's DC warrant in the amount of one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Ken, second? Tony? Beamer's PR twenty-one R.
And then the payroll warrant associated with that for payroll twenty-one. You want to read the amount there?
Uh, payroll warrant for seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and three cents. These are just the standard payroll warrant twenty-one. And...
Can you read the amount, Mitch?
Seventeen thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars and three cents. Motion to approve?
Second.
Tony, uh, Ken and Art?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh oh. Is that it? No more warrants?
Oh, I'm sorry. Here's your check warrant.
Okay, check warrants. In the amount of thirty thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-eight cents with the ones over a thousand. William Barney Construction, Daleys, Hudson River Tractor Company, John Ray and Son, KAS Inc., KAS Inc., EJ Prescott Inc. for four thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
What's that, fabric, Mitch?
Um, EJ Prescott, is that fabric?
That's usually press, uh, fabric if we need it, though. I thought we had a bunch in stock. You'd have to check the actual invoice, Ken. Does it say fabric?
Four seven six three five.
Sometimes it's us and sometimes it's the water department.
I see a bunch of fabric out here in the trailer the other day.
Oh, could be. Workshop invoice, let me see.
It has kind of blue water drops on it.
Blue water drops?
Yeah. Put up under E.
Are these in this order?
Yeah. Yes, they're all in this order, it's alpha.
So, it'll be back here.
No, she does it under P for Prescott. Oh, yeah, okay. You referred too far. Go ahead and just check this, too. No, that's a water department, that's Ken.
Oh, okay.
Those were more water meters, digital meters.
Okay, so that was all the Prescott.
What's, what's the material for Barney?
Barney was a three-quarter inch, I just went by that one. Barney was...
Yeah.
Three sixteen stockpile crushed stone, one hundred and fifty-four yards, I would assume, at eight bucks a yard.
What size is that stone, Mitch?
Doesn't say, just three six, three, just crushed stone, it doesn't say.
Maybe the tailings that they used in holes.
Then you got another one for fifty-nine.
What's the price on that? Three yard?
Eight dollars, eight dollars a yard. Eight dollars a yard. And then... Any questions, or...
Well, I'm just wondering, because some of his material is more expensive than, than Peckham's, that's all I'm thinking. If we could be paying five dollars a yard, I don't know why we aren't paying ten dollars or eight dollars or whatever.
Okay, he's paying, okay.
I mean, the difference that you got to watch on Peckham is that everything they sell is by the ton, so you got to, like on their crushed gravel, you got a factor of one point six per ton to get a price of a yard. So, it's not, it's not apples and apples, so to speak. And every, every one of their, every one of their different materials at Peckham's is a different weight to it, different factor. Like crushed stone, depending on the size, can be one point two.
So, that would be what's their base price, though?
Well, every, every one of their prices, because you have a contractor price and a municipal price, which is the same. But what I'm saying, if you're buying from, say Barney, if he's paying eight dollars a yard...
He's not paying by weight.
He's, he, you're getting a yard, right, you're not paying by weight. So, you have to watch that, that you're not, like their Econo gravel down here is six dollars a ton, but it factors out to like seven dollars and something a yard. So, if you're paying eight dollars a yard over there, and it's not, some of them, some of that, that slate gravel, which is basically a clay base, and it's not as good in some cases as what Peckham's selling. So, you just got to watch that, that's all.
Okay. So, any other discussion? Any other questions?
Nope. I guess, I just wanted to check that, that's all.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Four oh. Jerry, I think you're up. Come on up.
Anybody enjoying spring in rural Vermont? Maybe outside of the roads?
Today, for sure. This weekend.
Has anybody seen our emergency operations plan? Help this for everybody.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a plan that when I first started kind of getting involved in this, was three pages long. It's grown to, oh, about thirty when you put all the appendices on there and everything, so, um, this is the base plan. It's mandated by, by the state, each town has to have one, and it's adopted by the select board, has to be adopted by the select board chair, which, I don't see him here. And then there's training they've kind of tied to it, too, which is also tied to funding, which is ICS training, you have to keep that up to a certain level to keep the door open for a lot of funding that the state...
Jerry, can you explain what that means?
ICS, Incident Command System. Hand this out to you. Most has gone through FEMA, these two courses that everybody has to take, you can do right online, takes about an hour, I've circled the two that are mandated by the state. And then the two-hundred level course, the three-hundred level course, four-hundred up through are provided throughout the state at different locations throughout the year. Some, when I have enough people together, I have the course right here at the firehouse or right here at town hall, we've done it in the past. Being a new board, I know everybody kind of has to get back up to speed, so... They set timeframes, October first is the first one, everybody has to have at least one hundred.
This coming October first?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, I think it's March first of next year, everybody has to have the two-hundred.
Everyone on the plan, is that the, these are everybody in the select board?
Well, once you do the, the first initial courses, you'll see how that kind of ties to how the plan works.
Okay.
It's a command structure that everybody from big business uses. It originally started with wild and fire, that's where it came from. Bill Gates uses it at Microsoft. It's a way of breaking things apart, delegating, that type of thing.
When you say everybody, you mean that the people that are listed here?
No, not the select board, anybody that could be involved in an incident. I had the highway crew go through it, go to one hundred.
We had several officials.
Town clerk, fire department, well, most of those guys are two-hundred now.
Okay.
The last select board, Karen, Bill.
Greg?
No, it was the board before that. I had everybody up to two-hundred on that board, and then it's a, it's a constant battle, and the state knows that. You're not always going to have a hundred percent on your training. There's always going to be boards changing, employees change, fire departments change, so it's a constant. One of my responsibilities is to try to keep that training level up. And the state sets thresholds to where, okay, if your training level isn't up, then the doors aren't open for certain grants that are out there, that type of thing. Generator grants, hazard mitigation grants, that type of thing. So...
So, you're going to set one up and notify us, which one?
Well, if, if, the mission right now is if you can knock those two off, you can print your certificate right out online, right from FEMA, and if you can get those to me, then I can get you recorded with the state, because I have to send up our numbers, who has what, that type of thing.
Okay, so you want us to go on here and do the self?
If you can do the one hundred and the seven hundred, that's the introductory, it's not a big deal, it's not, I know a lot of people get nervous when they take tests, it's not really that hard, but it gives you a good understanding of what, what ICS is all about, and it's kind of the foundation for it. Eventually, you know, once we get that, it's a progressive thing, you have to do the seven hundred and one hundred, then the two hundred, you can't jump around, so, we get enough people here that have the one hundred under their belt, and I can get a class, and you can't do the two hundred or three hundred online. The two hundred is twelve hours.
Okay.
Three hundred is, I want to say twenty-four hours.
So, basically, it gives you a chain of command, chain of command, who to call, who to give you up the people to call for continuity of...
Yeah, yeah, it kind of gives you an understanding of all that, and then once you get into the three hundred level, it actually goes through scenarios, you actually have to figure it out for yourself, you know, that type of thing, so, hospitals, just about, I mean, the, our hospital, SVMC uses it, Rescue Squad uses it.
I'm sure all the banks in town have them, too.
You're starting to see it in a lot of smaller businesses now having plans, some type of emergency plan. It used to be, okay, the exits are there, and this is, there's where the fire system is, and that's where it is. Now, everybody's looking for a written plan.
Yeah, and it said, they, they just had something up for emergency planning, they just had a course on that or a talk on that from the state level.
They do a lot of different ones, a lot of different levels. Law enforcements are a little bit different than the fire departments, the town, municipal, that type of employees are a little bit different than the fire department and law enforcement, but this kind of gives you an overall understanding. So, I update this, they call it a LEOP now, Local Emergency Operations Plan, it used to be a Rapid Response Plan and a Basic Emergency Operation Plan, and now it's a Local Emergency Operation Plan. I update this every year, new contacts, names change, numbers change, that type of thing. And then I get it to BCRC and they file it with the state, so it's on record. The state at any time can pull up, or I could, if we were in a situation and somebody mentioned Irene, and we needed a track loader, or we need another grader, we need another tandem. All the towns in Vermont, their plans are on file. I can pull up and say, okay, does Arlington have a tandem dump truck that we could use? Is it available? With Irene, the whole state was hit, kind of everybody for themselves kind of thing, but sometimes it's localized, ice storm here, maybe not up in Burlington, but down here, we can reach out. In the plan, it gives you your, toward the back. It gives you resource typing, which is something new in the last couple of years, and the typing is a national standard, so they actually spell out what a type one attack pumper is. They spell out what a type one on-road dump truck is. So, based on what we have, I have to find what criteria that fits in, and then I've listed what we have on there. And it's...
You got the one, one, two, 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 three?
Yeah, we have two graders, that type of thing. So, same thing could happen, somebody could call us, I think Wenhall did, looking for a dump truck. You know, do you have an extra tandem truck that we could use, our roads or whatever they needed it for? So, towns are encouraged now to reach out. The plans are done so that we can kind of be, the state looks at it self-sufficient for the first forty-eight hours. Sometimes they found an Irene, towns are cut off for longer than that. So, they kind of want towns to have their own plan, their own group of people that can respond and kind of hold the fort until you can, you know, state can get here with more National Guard, you name it, can get here with more resources. So, what I'm looking for is to adopt it tonight, so I can get it, it's due by May first, get it upstate so that's on file.
You need Tim's signature?
I need Tim's signature on it, the select board chair or the town manager, and we don't have a town manager, so...
You could do it acting, as acting.
I could do, I could do the acting, I could sign it as acting chair.
Or you want to, if you can do it, that's, that's great. If not, we'll have to wait for Tim or not.
Do you want to have, make a motion to approve the emergency, local emergency operations plan?
So moved. Second.
By Tony. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Four oh zero. Is that the one I have to sign?
Yes, it is. Those are kept on file here, I keep a copy because it has a lot of contact info, that type of thing, it's usually with me, the fire chief gets a copy, and then reg tray at the VSP, he gets a copy also. So, everybody has it there and knows what to do.
Hey, Jerry, in my prior experience, we forged a multi-town mutual aid agreement.
Yeah.
For the loan of equipment. Have you seen an agreement like that, that we could borrow? I could call the town of Hartford and see what they, they have a copy.
Yeah, there's a mutual aid, yes, I can, I can get one of those, a blank one is what you're looking for, something to look at, yeah?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Unless BCRC has already done that.
One of the forms that I got through this is one of those.
We can talk about it maybe tomorrow morning.
Yep.
At our...
Yeah, with Mike.
Okay.
The other thing I wanted to kind of strike up some conversation on was the generator at the school that we have set in place, but we don't have wired up yet.
You're waiting for the switch, right?
Well, I have a little bit of money left in my budget. Originally, I'd asked for fifteen thousand dollars, which would have been, I guess, the project to be about a thirty thousand dollar project to wire it up, transfer switch, the wiring, that type of thing. And the fifteen thousand was to match if they came out with a generator grant, which the state didn't the last two years. So, that was our match. They didn't come out with the grant, so I've started to try and at least keep the project moving forward with little resources I had. Budget season, this last season, I asked for another fifteen to complete it, to go with what I had left, and that was denied, or thought about, then they cut it to seventy-five hundred, and then they cut it to zero. So, I think I have twelve left from the original request, and I'd like to kind of keep it moving forward. There is one grant out there that I'd like to apply for, it's through FEMA, it's a... There is one grant out there that I'd like to apply for, it's through FEMA, it's a Hazard Mitigation Grant, no guarantees, but at least I'd like to apply for it. That due date for that is about a week or so out, so I'm going to have some discussion with BCRC applying for that. There's also been some discussion between the school and the town, and who should pay for what, and it's kind of murky as to what that is, we don't really have a formal agreement. I asked for something like that, just in the event that it's not a handshake, so faces change, people change, we have something here that somebody else can pick up and say, okay, here's what the deal is. And I think it was Rick Pembroke that came up with this from the supervisory.
Larry Johnson filled me in. It's come from the school district, but never got to the board table, and it's proposed, what, maintenance agreement?
I apologize, I didn't get a chance to make enough copies, but this is kind of what they had come up with.
It's just an agreement between the town and?
Yeah, and it, you know, it's who's liable for what, who's liable for the fuel, there's been discussion on whether the fuel should, the town should pay for. I met with the school board, you know, to run the generator once every couple of weeks, once a month, takes a little or no fuel, they seemed okay with that. But if we're going to use it as a shelter and run it for a week straight, or three days straight, maybe the town, so I think there should be something there in writing. In talking with Poundle, I thought they had one, and come to find out, they didn't.
So, you want to put this on a, for discussion for next?
So that needs to be warned for discussion.
Warned for discussion.
Yeah, look it over, I just wanted to make sure it got to you guys, and you guys can...
I think we have a better copy of it somewhere.
Do you know, have you priced out the three-phase, what is it, 400 amp?
I've gotten a couple of prices from a couple of different people on finishing the project, getting the switchgear in there, the wiring and all of that.
Now, did you need, go ahead, I'm sorry.
There's, at that same time, I've had people, organizations in town come to me and ask me, what is there left to do, and how can we help? So there are some other organizations in town that are willing to help on the monetary side of things. The school has also kind of made a little bit of a move to say, well, we might have a little money, too. So it seems like everybody, if I can get everybody together, maybe around a table and work it out, we can get it done. So I'm trying to initiate the dialogue and maybe do that.
Is the grant you're applying for, is it a match grant, or, I mean, do we have to match whatever you were given?
No, that would take care of it, yeah.
What's that?
It's not a match.
It's not a match grant?
I don't believe so. I'm going to double check it first thing with Michael, we're meeting with Michael on hazard mitigation stuff at BCRC tomorrow morning, but I'll check that, I believe it's not. I know the state one was, the ones we did for the firehouse, that was a 50-50 match on that. So I'm going to try to run that down tomorrow. But I don't know if the select board wants to take the initiative to start dialogue with the school, or after you look that over, if, how much involvement you want me to have, you want me to try the other, bring the other group into it, too, and?
Jerry, I know that Tim's, Tim, as school board liaison, is very interested in seeing this through to completion.
Yeah, I am, too, and I mean, it's...
Have a joint meeting with the school board?
And I think we should defer to him.
Yeah.
If you don't mind, I mean, I know, before he left.
People thinking about it, maybe keep it going, so it doesn't fall through the cracks, I know we're all busy, and it's just, I'd like to see it get completed, it's a great asset for the town.
Now, do you, on that three-phase switch, is it just a 400 amp, what is, are you dropping it down from that to 400?
Well, there's two scenarios. Right now, the generator itself was set for the voltage for the middle school, that's where the generator came from, and that voltage was higher than the voltage over here. So, my school thought, let me, if we can't finish it all at once, we have the generator there and we can run it, why not change the wiring on it for what little it costs to match our voltage in the school, in the event that we have something, before we're able to hook it up, we can drop wires and run in and hook right to the school. So I had...
Carpenter?
Brookfield.
No.
Come down, check it all out, service it, and then reconfigure the wires to match the school's voltage, 208. So right now, in the event we had something, we could run some tree wire, which is coated wire, safe, around the building in, and at least power the school if we needed to, in the interim, until we're able to hook it up. So we can leave the voltage alone, run it into the school, but that is only going to give us a 200-amp panel.
Okay.
Not going to be able to run, you know, maybe a few things in the kitchen, we're not going to be able to run everything. We're looking at lights, heat, there's sewer pumps, that type of thing, is the first things on the list. Then if we can pick up a few, maybe one refrigeration unit, or something like that in the kitchen, that's great. The other thought is to switch the voltage back to its high output, which is 460, run it in, and then take a transformer and step it down.
That's a switch, is that the switch you're talking?
Well, it's a transformer, that steps it down to meet their voltage, but it keeps the amperage high, so then we could have a 400-amp panel. By having a 400-amp panel, we could run twice as much stuff as a 200-amp. There's cost difference because of the transformer, so you got a little bit additional cost, but what's the benefit? You know, if you can, you know, it's another $2,500 for a transformer, you're stepping it down, but you're getting twice the load out of it, it may be worth the money.
Is it big enough to run the whole school?
The entire school, I don't think it will.
How many watt generator is it?
It's 100 KW, yeah. So, you know, it could do like 90% load, that type of thing. Have an electrician look at it, the ones I talked to didn't think it'd pick everything up, but it'd be awful close.
Well, 100,000 divided by 2, or, be 220.
There, 208.
208. That gives you the wattage, or is it, that'll give you how many amps?
I mean, looking at it, looking at it with the, I was kind of leaning toward the transformer, even though the prices are...
Change the voltings back up to 460.
You're looking at a pretty substantial difference between running it without the transformer at the lower voltage versus running it at the higher voltage. But what you're going to gain, you might pick up the whole building.
Yeah, I think that's something to look into. I think that was...
At least the essential services, like the cafeteria.
Either way, we can pick up that, for sure. I mean, we can heat, the lights, the, you know, the sewer pumps, that type of thing, circulators, all that stuff, we can do that either way. It comes down to the kitchen, when you're running refrigeration units and things like that, they draw quite a bit, so. Without having an electrician go through and actually spec out each individual appliance they're running, and getting an idea, but going with a 400-amp panel, it'd look like we might be able to get the whole thing.
So what are you talking about for cost?
Well, it goes back into that $30,000 range, as I originally thought that it probably just, in my experience around things, hydroelectric and that type of thing, it looked like that's kind of a good idea to start from. 30 is about what it looks like to finish it up.
So you spent 3,000 of the original 15 already?
Servicing, Brookfield, servicing, reconfiguring, down to voltage, that type of thing. Yeah, so we've done the bare minimum. I can't thank some of the local guys enough, you know, the concrete materials, to move it, to get it there, I mean, it's been great, so. I just don't want, and what the school got it for, I just don't want it to sit there and be forgotten, kind of thing.
What's your emergency shelter now, the firehouse?
We have three, well, we also use the church down here. The ones that have generators right now are the two firehouses in the school. Yeah.
Well, I mean, but that's more advantage, yeah, it's a shelter, if you get it all hooked up. But it's more advantage to the school than in this, I mean, the whole town, but physically for the plant at the school, if that thing was down for three days, at 20 below zero.
There's all sorts of advantages. I mean, school, you have the transformer blowout on the pole, cuts the power off just to the school.
Right.
It's going to kick on, school can stay in session, doesn't disrupt anything, so it's a win-win both ways.
Yeah, but I mean, all I'm saying, if it was 20 below zero for three days, you can freeze that school tighter enough.
Oh yeah, for sure. I mean, and school could stay in session while it's, you know, that way.
Probably wouldn't, if you're like that, but...
Well, I mean, the building would be fine, they wouldn't lose their assets.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, just for the, just for the safety of the building, for the safety of the building.
Sure, it's protecting their asset, there's no doubt about it. Would we use it for a shelter? I'm not going to stick my neck out there and say we're never going to need it, we might need it tomorrow.
You might.
You don't know?
Yeah.
My biggest fear is an ice storm, something like Burlington had, going back in October for a snowstorm, something like that. And you have to look at the capacity, too, you know, I mean, the firehouses aren't all that big.
No.
And the firehouses are kind of multi-use in the sense that if we have an incident where we need a shelter, and we're running fire trucks in and out, and we're running communications, and do you really want to shelter people in that environment?
Yep.
So the school is kind of ideal.
Yeah.
Most towns use their schools.
Got the space.
Yeah, you got the space, the access, handicapped accessible, there's all sorts of advantages to it. Red Cross would come in, I mean, that type of thing.
You're always going to have water there, too, because it's village water.
Exactly.
100 KW will handle 400 amps.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we were thinking at the max. So, that's kind of where I am with that, I just, you know, wanted to make sure the ball didn't get dropped, and whether, how much involvement you want me to have, I'll do whatever it takes to, you know, if you want me to reach out and try to set something up, if you guys want to reach out and try and set something up, or...
For the school?
Yeah, with the school.
Let's, can we defer to Tim, because I know he's already been talking to Larry.
On that there.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry. You're welcome.
Thank you, Jerry.
Now, was there anything, does anybody have to sign?
About an hour.
Oh, you already did, that's great.
About an hour, it's not, it's not a big deal, just kind of gets your feet wet as far as how that all works, so if you happen to be the one to pick up this and need to use it, you kind of, this doesn't look foreign to you.
On to the...
Good night.
Thank you, you, too.
On to the bridge report.
We get, I think it's only every two years that we get these bridge inspection reports, and these are by, they're performed by V trans technical staff of bridges that are, have spans of over 20 feet in length. They inspect on a 24-month cycle, and we have some pretty good inspection reports, some good feedback, and they commend the crew for some of the work that we had done. What they do note is...
To remove some of the dirt off the bed.
Yes, yes. Down at the bottom, under inspection summary and needs, they will make recommendations for maintenance in the upcoming season, and what we need, what you're doing when we sign off, that we've accepted these reports, is that we acknowledge that we will follow through with the maintenance recommendations. And so that, I've already given copies to our road foreman.
He didn't agree with it?
I haven't heard anything to the contrary, that, yes, so I think he agrees. The bridges, just for the information for the public, the bridges that have been inspected, Bridge 16, out, it's over White Creek, near the junction of Town Highway 9, and I don't know my Town Highway numbers, and so it's got to be Shasberry Hollow, or Bouclon, or Hideaway.
The 91?
And then we have the Bridge 19 over Little White Creek. 9 and 10, I think those are Ranger and Shasberry Hollow.
9, 3,009 is over Little White Creek also, 1, you know, 24 miles to junction with Feral Fair 10.
And then, yeah, the other one, Bridge 25 is over Cold Spring, so Art, I think is familiar with that, it's on, very close to Vermont 67. So, all you have to do is sign all five members, four members tonight.
Have a motion to approve the bridge inspection report?
So approved, so moved.
And if you could sign, we're staying, I'll fill in for the town of Shasberry.
10, or 10 motion, and Tony, you're going to fill in for the city town, right?
Yeah.
That's pretty nifty how they put these reports together.
Yeah, it's a nice heads up, especially when they go down into the poor condition categories, that you really need to do something.
Public funds policy and procedures, are we re-adopting these?
No, this is informational, I, but I didn't know that we had a policy in place until I was doing a little research, because we recently received another request for public assistance, and we keep the request confidential. Now, the process that I had been undertaking was, since our trustees for public funds, whom we elect, oversee and manage these public funds, I was giving these requests to the trustees. There is some mention in here of the select board, that I'm supposed to forward requests to you at one point, but...
Disbursements from principal maker, following funds?
Yeah, well, it's, it sends, there are guidelines, and these appear in the town report often, and that, so the trustees are well aware of how to make their disbursements. Said, applications must be accompanied by the application, usually this is from a social service agency that has vetted the request, we get copies of all of the available resources that this person may have, what's missing. Usually, it's to sustain heating for the rest of the winter, or even, or just a tank of fuel that might be needed, if, you know, this is a last resort request. And it says, applications will be processed by the town administrator promptly, and I do that, and then, under Sub B, the second sentence, as completed applications will be presented anonymously to the select board. So that is, that's the one step that I found out about, and so consequently, you haven't known, we've had two, two requests in the last 12 months.
For any particular fund?
Primarily the Julian Madison Fund, which is dedicated solely to helping women in town. And so, I guess it would be your feeling that you would like copies, just, we don't have to discuss them, but I would, I will provide you with the copies. And then the trustees have the guidelines under which to act, and then they make their decision. Does that make sense to you?
The trustees of the fund?
Public funds.
Of the public funds.
So you have Bill Fisk treasurer, you have Rob Stewart, who was elected, and you have Barry Mayer, who is finishing out his term. Can't remember who was up this year, I think it was Bill.
Good, I think Kathy didn't re-up either.
Kathy did not. So, that's an FYI.
So I think it's nice that a town is able to have these funds to help me in times of trouble.
And that was a new one for Bill Fisk, he didn't realize that we, and I didn't, had never heard of the Julian Madison Fund. The Cemetery Trust Fund, we've known about.
Hawkins, George Hawkins? Is unrestricted and dispersed by the discretion of select board, but it's policy to maintain a minimum principle of 80,000.
Correct.
So in that case, if someone were to ask for funds that didn't fall in those other categories, would you, would bring that to the select for us to say?
I would say, yeah, I would have to.
Well, thank you.
So that's, it's nice to know, it's a bad sign that we've had one, at least one last year, and we've had two this year, so that's not a positive sign.
Any other questions on the policies and procedures of the trustees of public funds?
Nope.
Nope, all set? Okay. All right, thank you. Town administrators' report.
You know what, we missed?
Yes.
The Household Health and Waste Days contract, we've got to get this signed. This was under legal review when you last met.
Number eight?
Number eight.
I don't have it.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, this is a revised, I caught it at the very last minute. We can either do it under my report, or under other business, how would you like?
Let's do it under your report.
Do it under my report, okay.
Does everyone agree to have it done?
Yeah, sure.
The envi...
Sure.
The envi, uh, we asked the new vendor, the new contractor that's going to be managing household hazardous waste days throughout Bennington County to devise a contract, because we usually have one with Clean Harbors that we re-adopt year after year, and our attorney had significant issues with it, so he basically performed a rewrite with some nice suggestions. I mean, everything was very sensible, I thought. And we also wanted to make sure the contract was enforceable under Vermont laws, it usually always cites the laws of the home state where the corporation's based, so there's always that issue. And Trade B did not have any issues with that, so you have, the document that you have is, and has been vetted by both councils, and so I'm just recommending that we get a motion to approve. We have insurance coverages that are required, all of the services that the town is to perform at the collection days are very, very typical. We're responsible to work with the contractor, we provide monitoring and traffic flow, we survey people as to what they're bringing, we have to have an emergency response plan ready and there at the day. We will be separately managing, of course, the collection of the mercury-containing lamps, bulbs, that's going to be one waste stream that's diverted, and then latex paint will be packaged separately and diverted as well. And because this is grant-funded through the state of Vermont, partially grant-funded, we cannot, I can't close the collection day even though I know we're going to have a budget overrun, we are going to have to stay open for four hours. And knowing that we, this vendor was selected primarily because we thought that their disposal costs looked a little lower, but the basic average is about 100 bucks a household to throw these events, it's, I will ask for donations this year. I haven't even had a little coffee can going around saying, "Please contribute." So, that's where we have it.
Do we have a motion to approve the new policy and procedures? Now, Wilmington's redrafted this and everything's all set?
Yeah. And that's the version.
Motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Art, Tony, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we all have to sign this?
Just one.
Okay.
Since it's warmed up, we're going to start getting very, very busy. I'm not going to talk about highways because the foreman is really your contact there. I do know that calls have dropped off in the last couple of days, I'm not so sure if people are going to be happy after tomorrow night in the rain that's coming in. I can only report that we had the greater, the new greater was down with electronic issues again, and that only, so that went down Thursday or Friday, but we couldn't get John Dear here until today. And so, but that's been repaired. Now, things are going to get busy at the transfer station because of the collection day, and we're now going to be able to get rid of that used oil and change that filter dumpster. It's the season where I have to have an annual inspection of the integrity of the cap, and there are some areas with erosion that we have to address, and I was remiss last fall, we just need to get the rodents out of there, though when the cap was being mowed last summer, the guys didn't think there was any active rodent holes at all. So, we still have some holes that do need to be filled with just junk fill or whatever. And what's interesting is that the topic of the landfill came up, and Mitch is going to fill you in, in reference to a resurgence of interest in solar projects and whether or not the landfill cap might be a suitable location. So, the only thing, I think what I can do when we have our engineer down inspecting the cap is to see if we can verify the depth of cover. I mean, I know what was specified in the original closure plans, but I want to get that confirmed by the state of Vermont and by our engineer, because that would have some bearing on whether or not that cap is ever suitable for an array of solar panels. We'll be going to bid on fuels. You will, it's not necessarily needs to go by you, but I can give you courtesy copies of the specs for the airport road paving project. I know, Ken, you might be interested, we're developing that because we've got to get our bids in. And the facilities committee is going to meet with me Thursday afternoon, I believe we set a 5:00 time, to go over what we want to do with this building between now and June 30th, as long as I start and obligate, you know, obligate ourselves, we will use that, try to draw down on the $10,000 budget. Now, in follow-up to the reorganization of this room and in light of the incident at the planning commission meeting, I had an electrician in, just today, actually, and I'm going to have to follow up with the state police about how buildings need to be outfitted for, if there's a panic, if you need a panic button or whatever. I think there's some regulations that have changed. It used to be that if you pressed the button, it would automatically ring at a police station or the BSP, at least where I used to work. I don't think that's any, the case any longer, and so we're going to verify that. And so, I'm not quite sure what, whether we can go, if it has to be hardwired or if we can go wireless, but that's something I want this, the facilities committee to look And so, if anybody has any, noticed anything that should be on our bucket list for superficial or less than superficial improvements to this building, I've got quite a list, but please send me an email. I've got an architect, and Rick, Ben Benedict, and Rick Kobek with construction experience, and whoever else would like to join us. That was the original facilities committee, there were others, Peter Only with his electrical background was there, David Beach. So, when we looked at lights today, we noticed that they, we have some that are not performing and that need to be changed, and one of my questions of this electrician was whether or not there would be any recommendations for how we can get better light in here. I don't quite understand why everything is directed to the ceiling, because you can't work, it's very dim.
And we need conversations on LED lights to reduce.
That's exactly what I think might be an option. You could go LED, it's going to be expensive, but...
Save it over the long run.
Save it over the long run, and you might end up having panels instead of these reverse mushroom-type of lights, but I think that that's a group discussion that needs to be had, not, oh, that's underway. And then, before we know it, we'll be into the June cycle of performance evaluations for all employees and for me, and year-end closing, it's going to go very fast. So, that's my report.
That's it? Thank you, Margie. Any other business, Tony?
No.
Good.
I'm wondering, I haven't heard anything about that bucket loader we got out here, slash forklift.
Yeah, I haven't either.
I know, and I raised it at our last meeting with our foreman, and I don't have any recommendation from the crew right now, Ken, it's more like, what should we do?
Well, the, I called not too long after I got on the board, VOSHA, because I was concerned about, well, being in a construction business, those boys are not kind to you. And I would call the informational section, and I was told that in order for that to be VOSHA-approved, it has to be checked out by either a mechanical engineer that handles heavy equipment or the company, which in that case would be John Dear. And, you know, like, as far as I know, that's the only way we can use that without, if we get caught putting that thing out for use.
You all, but you said that you can retrofit from a loader to a forklift, but not a forklift to a loader, which is what we've done.
The way, the way I understood it, regardless, if you change the configuration of that machine, it has to be approved either by an engineer or the company.
So, we have young Henry come down and run it through the...
I, I don't think that would cover it, I think, because they, they get real picky with that stuff.
I thought we had made the decision to sell that, but I think it was a catch-22, we couldn't sell it in the state it was in.
That's right.
The only way that we could sell it, that I understand, would be to put it back to what it was when we got it.
I'm not sure if that's...
I'm not sure that, yeah, how, what the investment would be to do that, I think we need to ask this specific question.
Oh, and then they put a bucket on it.
They put a whole new arms on it, and they got a bucket on there that I believe for that size machine is one size too big. I think it's a four-yard bucket, and it's not bigger than three, I believe.
It's a three-yard machine, and I've got one.
Yeah.
And that's been my quandary, because I wasn't sure whether there's going to be an expenditure of replacing the arms, I suppose, you could just get John Dear parts, just, boom.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they did with what was on it, it was, it was a workable machine when the town got it, I assume.
So, I thought at one point, and I thought I heard it again, but I might be wrong, I, I thought the magnitude of investment it would take to get that into a VOSHA-happy machine is less than 10,000, but I'm not exactly sure.
I mean, you know, that was all done before I got on the board, and I don't know, I assume when the town got it that it was mechanically operable as a forklift, or as a, yeah, forklift.
The purpose for getting that, it was in the 2012 budget, was to provide redundancy for loading sand in the winter. And it was to be a used machine, and it was a $16,000 budget, and it came in way under that. So, that, that's, that was the original purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
And that need apparently is still with us.
Need a backup, close hand.
Yeah, and then as Jerry was sitting here with emergency planning on his mind, I began to wonder if whether or not it would be a decent investment somehow. If we can make sure that this piece of equipment's going to be used, you don't want it just be sitting there idly.
No.
But that if it's retained in the area, I don't know if another municipality or, I mean, it would, we would stand to gain.
Maybe we should just...
From making it operational.
You should sign a memorandum of understanding with Peckham or something, if, God forbid, our machine falls down, you got something over there we could borrow for a day or two.
Yeah, or you rely on the private sector.
Yeah.
So, I think, yeah, the original intent was to turn around and sell this, but whether or not we can in its current status, I, remains to be seen.
Well, I mean, maybe just contact the mechanical engineer, let him look at the thing and say, if, you know, you got the steel is right, everything is right, you're good.
Okay. I will have to get some suggestions as to who that...
I mean, I've only worked around them things since I was 12 years old, it looks good to me outside of the bucket being too big, but that won't, my name on a piece of paper won't, won't cover VOSHA.
Anything else, Ken?
No.
KC Canary, would have called to Canary to do it?
Um, I don't know, alls I know is what the informational man told me was that, you know, it's got to be approved either by John Dear themselves or a licensed engineer. But I know them guys handed me a $1,000 fine before we got out of the car while doing a job for Bennington, and I wasn't violating nothing.
You got anything, Art?
Yeah, I would, I just want to make everybody aware that we probably, there's no doubt, we will be without a current town plan, we're going to have to write on the old one until the new town plan is approved. Margie, is it May 3rd or 4th?
I think it's May 4th.
May 4th. Our next meeting is, what's our next regular meeting?
May 5th.
May 5th.
May 5th. So, we'll have to decide at that meeting whether we will re-adopt the old plan or go without a...
I didn't, I thought we could just go without a plan for the...
I did a lot of, we did research, I know Art and I have had a conversation recently. I think it's probably still a matter of opinion, is collectively, you would probably have to decide whether you're willing to go without a plan.
One of the pitfalls is you cannot adopt any bylaws without a current town plan.
Right, but I did all the research that does point to the fact that we're fine applying for grants, but you lose, you still have your status in Act 250 hearings, but you would never be able to speak to whether or not an Act 250 proposal is in compliance with the town plan, because we don't have one. Similarly, with Act 248, review of telecommunication facilities or utilities or solar projects, you would have party status, but again, you wouldn't be able to testify as to whether it's...
Depending on the size of the solar, that would go to the public service board.
That's right, that's what Act 248 is.
We went to the planning commission meeting last week with Rob Wilmington and Jim Sullivan, and he said that I don't think there's, well, basically, the Act 250 thing and the town plan, you could, a person could bring up Act 250 whether any mention of the town plan is there or not, it doesn't have to be in the town plan. And he also said that there's no connection to the town plan, I'm going to the, specifically to the historical assets, there's no connection with that with any, we had him state it in the meeting, I asked him point-blank, there's nothing there that would, the town plan can't force anyone to maintain their property or change what they want to do with it, it's just an ideal, and the town plan, it's a vision, it's a, you know, it's a nice-to-have if you have a historical asset and you want to maintain it appropriately, that's great, but basically, it's your property, as long as you follow the town bylaws, not really much we can do about it. So, that was, that was brought up in that meeting, but he's basically said the, there is some things in the town plan that are referenced for some Act 250 hearings, but an Act 250 hearing can be instigated by a person that's not, by anybody, a property owner, that's not any reference to, in the town, not reference in the town plan. He says, it's like, I think one of the concerns in the public today is that if you're listed as a historical asset in the town plan, somehow you can be, or budding neighbors or whatever can be forced to do things against, you know, they don't, they don't want to do or can't do things they want to do, and that's not the case, not based on what I, the questions I asked at that meeting with Rob Wilmington and Jim Sullivan.
So, I was with, I was a little more casual when Art brought up the issue again of perhaps we ought to really think about adopting the old plan, because I really didn't see a downside to having no plan in place for a while. However, we just got a FedEx package today, and it is an... and it is an application for a telecommunications facility pursuant to Act 248, Public Service Board review. And we don't have a huge role in review of these facilities. What municipalities can do is very limited. But I think it's more some research right away as to if the status of our town plan has any bearing on this proceeding.
They mentioned something in the, in that meeting about the public service. They're pretty much a separate entity and I can't even remember exactly what they said.
Yeah. And I remember this, this VTAL came to the Select Board, who was on the board. Were you Mitch? It was about a year ago. And.
I was here, Ken was here.
Yeah, year, year, whatever. And it was portrayed to us by VTAL that our role was going to be, we wouldn't be holding public hearings per se because the public hearings levels with the PSB, but we could hold informational meetings and they would, at our request, come down and talk about the project. And so, I noticed that the approval forms, and you're going to be getting this for the next meeting, ask for recommendations from the town. Can be either the Planning Commission or the Select Board. And I was wondering if I meant the DRB. And/or BC, and, and the Regional Planning Commission is going to provide the same sort of feedback whether or not to recommend that the PSB approve the application. Do we have any issues or concerns? So.
Is this a new one that they're, they replaced one at the police barracks?
No, that is our fire department needing to install. This is one that the Planning Commission wondered right off why they couldn't double up on the VPR tower that's already up on Buck Hill. But this is on the Kolakowski property, 1576 Buck Hill Road. And I have, don't even, I haven't even read to see how tall the tower is. But they're going to be doing a balloon float, which is a very interesting way. What they do, that's when you can see how visible the tower will be because you'll see the height of the balloons. But you have to have certain weather.
So, is this something we're going to have on the next meeting?
Next meeting agenda.
Okay.
And they'll be sending copies around.
Okay, I have a, I have a couple things. Basically, I've gotten, I either, Margie forwarded me an email and then I contacted this person. But they're from Integrated, Integrated Solar Applications Corporation has partnered with Green Lantern Capital Montpelier, Vermont to bring solar to Wyndham County towns at no cost to the town. We could change that to Bennington County towns. We are able to do this through solar energy services agreement. Type of agreement with an investor. The town will, will achieve significant monthly energy cost savings, which she said would be in the range between around 15% electric bills, basically. And what it comes down would be taken off. It doesn't cost anything to the town. And if we had a place where we could use it, that's why we're talking about the landfill. They need four acres or so. And they could put a solar array on there for 500, up to 500 kilowatt solar array. And the question I have for the board is, does anyone, I mean, she offered to come down here and give us a PowerPoint slideshow to show us everything that, what she's talking about in a 15-minute conversation I had with her. I thought it would be to save 15% on our, on our bills. I mean, we're talking $24,000 a year just in electric bill for our, for our properties. And, you know, 15% is 15%. I can get 20, you know, $3,000 off or whatever, that's pretty enough for me. And it doesn't cost, but we do have a, we could purchase it. We do have a purchase option after they depreciate everything and it's all paid off on their end. They could sell it to us. And it's, they usually do a seven, 10, or 15-year purchase agreement. And I talked to her this morning, as a matter of fact, and I asked her if, and she basically says, you know, I'll come down, I'll stay, they're over in Brattleboro, this, this lady, Katrina Wilson. And she'd come in and she would come into any one of our Select Board meetings or a special meeting if we wanted it to talk about it, how, what our options are. I don't pretend to know any more about it than what I just told you. But I thought it would be a good idea just to, you know, get a look at it and see.
There was one company that called, but they needed a minimum acreage.
That was like a four, this one's four acres for a 500-kilowatt array. So, I don't know how much the landfill.
And that's not the landfill. We can't, the landfill is less than two, three, less than two.
Well, we should.
I think, but I will have to take that back. I've got that for my landfill mowing specs, so I can look at that.
I mean, I think it'd be worth, I personally would think it'd be worth to have them come in and.
My, my only question meant to be, you know, are they going to set them in concrete? Is it going to violate the cap on that landfill?
Well, I know.
Well, I mentioned the landfill and they said, yes, I think that some places they've looked at those before.
No, I imagine, but I mean, that would be my first thing that would come to my mind.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were going to be talking about the company that Bill Pennybaker and the Environmental Issues Committee.
And I did get another, I did get another.
There's another vendor, Sovereign or Sovren, that just got back to Bill Pennybaker on the Environmental Issues Committee for a May 20th presentation to them. And I didn't know if you wanted to combine. And they meet, well, when they can. I think they were going to start meeting again the way they used to. And it might be, it was a Thursday, I think.
Yeah, I don't see, here's the, yeah, it's right. The first thing they talked about was solar power and shafts, feasible possible sites, landfill impact, net metering laws, others. But I didn't, haven't seen the minutes on how that, I don't think I, I think I thought I saw some on that, but I can't pull it up right away here. And in Dropbox, the Vermont, these are those things that listing on Historic Register or whatever. It basically says in all these documents that thousands of historic district sites, buildings, structures and objects throughout Vermont are listed on the National Registry. Being listed does not in itself impose any obligation on the property owner or restrict the owner's basic right to use and dispose of the property as he or she sees fit. This is on one, this is on two different documents within that link that you sent out in the, in the Dropbox. And they both say the same thing.
I still think there's a little more research that we need to do because after hearing Art's story, I did find there is a place on the, one of the web pages about photo documentation of historical resources and that there are standards that they ask you to do. But in Art's situation, the Act 250 proceedings used it like a leverage.
I, I don't know what Art's situation is. What's, you said you had a building that you couldn't do anything with?
Oh, I had a building that was poured down, but I had to get permission to tear it down.
Because it was, it wasn't the National Historical Registry?
It was the, the houses on Brick Row were put into the National Historic Registry by the town of North Bennington, even though it's in the township of Shasberry. And I didn't find that out until, until I was.
I mean, did, is it, was it, is it in the North Bennington bylaws or something? Because I asked this question point-blank at the Wilmington and BRCRC. And they said, there's really nothing that we can do unless it's in the bylaws, unless the town adopts a historic preservation. And we have not done that. So, I don't know where, why that would be. And I would have to talk to the people or understand why it actually happened because it's really, everything I, everyone I've asked from the documents here, and we had the Planning Commission meeting the other night here, right in this building, last Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or whatever it was. And I specifically asked that question.
Yep, okay. Warren Foster will let me know.
You got to let, if he, if there's something different that the BRCRC doesn't know and Rob Wilmington doesn't know, because they were the ones that were here and those are the ones I asked. That's all I had. Any actions for review? What are our review of action items? What do you have? The Board of Civil Authority, training?
What did you, so that's what you agreed on because I had to go downstairs, so, okay. BCA training? Find out when it is and make sure people attend?
See if, see if we can get somebody to attend. Other than that, I don't know what he, I mean, we, we did, from that meeting, we did lower his assessment based on the location of the two-acre lot. I think we lowered it to a point where, I mean, he's got a building permit. It can't be land use if he's got a building permit. I mean, you're in land use or you're not, or you're not going to do it. But I think that's about the only action item I have from that. The action item for, is to talk to the school board and get the status of the installation of the emergency generator. Action item, I will call Katrina. Is, if there, can you let me know if there is something on 520 for the economics or?
I think I saw.
Environmental Issues Committee?
But I will forward that email to you.
Okay, then I will call Katrina and see if we can meet at the same time then if everyone's in agreement for the 520. I don't think there's anything else, is there? Does anyone have any action items? Oh, we skipped something. The fire department's truck.
That's a, that's the background for Joe's visit at your next meeting.
Okay.
And he'll fill you in on all the, the grants and how we're going to proceed with installation on the VSP tower, the repeater or whatever it is we need, new base station. So, he's scheduled to meet with you at 6:00 next meeting. Then you have a public hearing on Donald Green Road, whether to discontinue that. And that was.
And that wasn't, that wasn't completed the last board?
No, we didn't hold the hearing because everybody got so busy. So, it's just, it's a request. Yeah, from the prior board that we hold the hearing. And so, we can add whatever else we need.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.